Here we're going to cover this area. Um, our friends from Airevac noted that it's time for our contract review and renewal. Uh, I believe this, it's upcoming this month, this end of February. Okay? And, uh, Mr. Gann asked if they could come up today and maybe tell you guys a little more about the services they provide and the change in the contract itself. So I'm going to give him the floor. First of all, today, let him introduce his associates he brought with him today.
So, uh, my name's Nathan Gann. I'm with Airevac 45 out of Fayette here. Uh, this is Larry Smith. He is our program director there that oversees operations and the functions of the base and that kind of stuff. And, uh, this is Laura Parker. She's visiting with us, um, from out of Mississippi. So she's kind of sitting in and making sure she's learning and doing what I'm supposed to be doing. So, um, but I want to give you some background on everything, kind of some details of how everything works. I brought some packets with me. So y'all can... Got a reference, I'll see. Okay. Um, when you flip it open, you're going to see some brochures in here. Um, the main brochure that you see where you see the helicopter and the plane, this is our main membership brochure. Um, and, and the mayor wanted me to kind of just go over everything so make sure that y'all understood how we, how we kind of worked and how everything was covered and done. Um, the emergent, which everyone is most commonly familiar with here is the Airevac insurance or the Airevac membership, that kind of stuff. It is, um, the coverage for emergency for the helicopter. Okay? We are coast to coast, including Alaska and Hawaii. We cover in over thirty states, over three hundred and twenty aircraft. Um, seven of those aircraft are here in the state of Alabama. And y'all are sitting in a great location right here between Airevac 16 at the Shoals and outside of Fayette. So, um, the other thing that we have, that you see the plane, this is a fly you home membership. The way fly you home works is if you're more than a hundred and fifty nautical miles from home and something happens and you're hospitalized and you pick up the phone and call us, we'll bring a jet out and we will fly you and your travel companion back to your, um, to a local hospital of your choice. So, kind of brings you back. Um, those are the main two that we offer. There's also an air med. We were bought out a couple of years ago by Global Medical Response. We're one of the biggest players in the game now and so we completely offer international services and that kind of stuff. But those are, those are the memberships that we, that we offer. Years ago, we offered what's called a municipal site plan. And Hamilton was one of the folks that got on board. And so that is what we're renewing this year. The way that the municipal site plan works is it is a local membership, so to say. It covers anyone in the city that resides in the city limits of Hamilton and they are covered as long as they are flown from within Marion County. Okay? On the right-hand side, you'll see an agreement. It covers all that, a little bit detailed in it. So, to give you an idea on it, a regular membership, the emergent full price is eighty-five dollars. Seniors, who is anyone that's sixty or older, gets that for sixty-five dollars. If they live in the city limits, they can upgrade to the full network membership. Regular price would be forty-five and seniors will get it for thirty-five. So that's, that's kind of the benefit that they can get. So, but they're only covered if they're flown from within Marion County. That's how the contract is laid out. Um, this year, we did have an increase. This is the first time there's been an increase since, uh, since the contract went into place. It is an increase of twenty-five hundred and forty-six dollars. And on the back, there's a copy of invoice. So your total is twenty-four oh forty-one to renew for the year. So those are the main things I wanted to kind of cover with you. You'll see also in here, there's two other brochures about the payroll deduct and the census plans. This is some options that we are offering to, uh, to area businesses now that they can get on board to cover their, uh, cover their employees and all. One of the things that's really nice, and this is what comes as part of your package that y'all got, the upgrade, the census plan is owned by the business. Okay? So the way it works is we sell them slots. If they've got ten employees, we sell them ten slots. The employees occupy those slots and if one quits, they pull him out, they put the new one in place, okay, for their coverage. But the, but the business owns that. All your businesses in the city get a discounted rate if they choose to participate in that. So they get it down to the forty, forty-five dollar upgrade cost is what they get to be able to cover all their employees. The benefit is it extends a little bit because it doesn't matter if that employee lives in the county or lives in the city or where they reside. They're covered because your business is within that city limits. So, there's some other papers in here, our network map, um, that that type of membership. One of the things I have a lot in my municipalities doing is going to the nationwide or the, uh, the full network membership. There is a quote in here. If y'all would be interested in adding that on to what you've got to cover all of your, uh, y'all had about eighty-five employees, so it'd be around thirty-eight hundred dollars if y'all wanted to do that. Um, that would cover everybody in their household regardless of where your, um, where your employees lived and it would cover them across the entire network. So if that's something y'all wanted to do, I just wanted to make sure and bring that up if y'all wanted to choose to do that. Um, but that's kind of, I know that's a lot thrown at you in a really short, little quick time. Um, but that's kind of how it works and what y'all got in place and if you want to renew. I will tell you this, it's very important. Um, we no longer write municipal site plans. Actually, we no longer write site plans at all. And, um, so if you ever let this go, there's no getting it back. Okay? Um, I've had some that's, that's had that and I've ran it all the way up the ranks to try and help them out and if they don't, they don't anymore, we just don't do them. So, but anything else you want me to cover, any questions or?
Do you know how many years we've been with Airevac now?
Yeah.
It's probably because of Florida, I'm thinking. It's longer than that.
So I was thinking...
For as long as we were the first city to do it, it was, it's been like six or seven years.
Two thousand and fourteen was ringing the bell, I don't know if that's a trap line, but...
Because I know in Marion County, you, you and Hackleburg, Braya are all doing it. The only city that opted out was Winfield and they've tried to come back in since then and we don't offer it, so we can't do it.
How many times has it been used?
A lot.
A lot. So it didn't cost the, didn't cost the rest of me.
Didn't cost the rest of them.
And not... If they live here, I mean, if it's in the city.
In the city limits, we've, in your area right now, it's sort of unique because, well, not unique, everything's unique when it has to hit mess because we're having a lot of problems with the ambulance services. They're doing great jobs, but they get long calls and not, because look like today, we had a call from Fayette, an ambulance having to take one to the other side of Nashville because that's the only place they could have got to be at. Well, they only slot so many ambulances in this city, so if that ambulance has to do a long transport like that, you'll end up short-staffed. So we've had to do scene flights where we land, our departments land us in the people's front yard, my medics, nurses go inside, put them on our ground, bring them out, put them in the helicopter and fly, straight from the scene. Um, it's not, nothing against the ambulance service, I just, they do the best they can with the staffing they have. And, uh, but we've had to do that, so we work really, really close. We actually increased some of our launch criteria inside Hamilton City, um, where normally, you know, mostly you do trauma and you do strokes and heart attacks. We've done some seizure calls this year. So basically what happens if nine-one-one gets called and they get an extended ETA on an ambulance, then they'll go ahead and launch us and, uh, we'll go ahead and launch coming to the scene. And we've had diabetic calls run on, which normally you wouldn't run on a diabetic call with a helicopter, but if you don't have any availability, then we back up the ambulance services and take care of them. Sometimes we get on the scene, wake them up and wait till an ambulance can get there and transport them because we don't want to, you know, the patient to get flown by helicopter if they don't need to be. Uh, we've done that before, but, you know, just try to help out the community.
Y'all have a ballpark figure of how many people used it last year?
I do not know. Um, I know, uh, there's no telling how many, which floor I can, I can get it for you, but there's, let me just give you one thing. Uh, what's there, it's about sixty, what's the, the membership for the city?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand. Alright, I know I can cover half of, half of a flight. I mean, one flight. I mean, I'm just being honest with you, yes, about half of one flight. And, um, I mean, it works. Another thing, I don't know if y'all realize, we've always done it for, and will continue to do it. We do early activation. My aircraft launches and comes this way just by nine-one-one calling us before anybody gets on the scene. So if you have a bad accident or they call in nine-one-one or perceived a bad accident or anything, we'll launch and come this way. Sometimes we get, and we get canceled and go back. We don't bill anybody for any of those. So, you know, we're looking, you might do, you know, two or three of those a week and we launch, come up here, get canceled, go back home.
Where do you launch from?
Um, the closest base you have here is Fayette. We're about a fifteen-minute ETA to Fayette to here. But you do have, I mean, from here, you got Fayette, you got Florence, it's going to be, or Moses Charles is actually on this side of Florence. So they can be here in about twenty-five minutes. Then you also have, um, where is it? Mississippi, Corinth, Mississippi. We have a Corinth, Mississippi base that can be here pretty quick. We also have one out of Coleman that can be here. We've literally had four aircraft in Marion County in less than thirty minutes. I mean, we had a big rec up in Britton one day and had burned off four of them and was able to transport everybody. So, we can get here pretty quick.
Can I ask you a question? I know we ran into it quite a bit. People will call, um, maybe they've gotten a letter, you know, trying to determine if they're in the city limits or, or whatever, if they've had to use the fly. Say it was an accident at a business here in the city limits, but the patient themselves didn't live in the city limits.
They have to live inside the city.
They have, so it doesn't matter the business and where the accident happened?
Nope. They have to live inside the city limits for them to be covered.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
And a lot of times, even inside the city limits, you'll get, our billing is send out, we bill quick, so they might send them a letter and then we have to go back and say, hey, determine, say, hey, this patient's inside the city limits. And we end up working those out on the back end, but they send out, they just process pretty quickly on our bill.
Because I've had to write some letters, you know, confirming that that person did live in the city limits.
Right.
It was taken care of.
And if you ever have any problems, you can touch Nathan or me and we'll, we can follow up on our end.
It always seemed to fix it.
Worked out?
Yeah.
Oh, we appreciate having you. I mean, it helps us out tremendously. And one thing, just on, like the nursing staff at the hospital, they all know, and if they got, a patient comes in and they see that that patient's in the city limits, I hate to say it, that's just clicks in their head that, hey, I ain't flying, it's not going to cost them nothing. You know, they don't have to worry about it.
It's a, it's a good service to provide that nobody else does. It's, it is a lot of money, but it's good save for residents, life and death, you know.
I mean, we're going to fly them no matter what. We just try to get the bill. Yeah.
And it covers them even if they don't have a membership with you, but they live in the city limits.
As long as they're flown from Marion County.
Yeah, they gotta be flown inside the county. If they go, if they go to Florence and get flown, no, unless they've done the upgraded membership.
But you're saying county, you mean city for us?
No, whole county.
No, it covers them.
They can be in Winfield and have a rec and get flown from Winfield Hospital or get flown from a scene flight in Winfield and be a resident of Hamilton.
And it covers them.
And it covers them. As long as they're inside the county.
I didn't know that.
But for forty-five dollars, upgrade, it don't matter where you at, if we fly, you're covered.
A lot of people do that. They'll upgrade, they'll, y'all pay half of it and then they pay that forty-five dollars and do the basic life. So if they were at Gatlinburg and had to be flown up there, one of our birds could have flown them from up there and not cost them anything. So...
We've been a member here for several years. Y'all still offer the, um, like, let's just say, for example, you're in California and you get sick and you need to be flown to UAB.
We have the fly me home.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's a, it's an add-on, it's more expensive.
I, I bought that last year and that's what, I didn't know if y'all still.
You travel a lot? It's a, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Because when you got, when you're stuck out in the middle of nowhere and you need back, you know, you're looking at, you know, you're telling them what the jet bill would cost.
It's a hundred and thirty-four dollars a year to add it on.
I think it was around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, or what was it?
But if you're a traveling person, it, it really pays off.
Just, just for the sake of discussion, and it might be in here somewhere, let's say the increase we experienced this year in our, in our agreement, um, I'm sure that you get that pricing probably from your parent company or something, somewhere. Is there any chance that, that it'll ever price a city like us out of, out of the plan? I mean, I know this is our first increase, but what can we expect going forward?
I really don't know. It's hard to say.
Yeah, I've been, I've been with it for nineteen years. You know, I started the Fayette base, I've been with Airevac for nineteen years. And we've had, in nineteen years, I know of four increases over nineteen years. So we started out at like thirty dollars was the first original membership, somewhere like that. And we went from thirty to eighty-five and that's just buying straight out, that's not a corporate. So, so over twenty, nineteen years, that's not too much of a, a jump that I don't think. Inflation's jumped a lot in nineteen years, but, uh, that's about what we've seen.
We just didn't want, that's true, being shocked when we hear the numbers.
Yeah, we...
We, we like the contract, uh, we always have and, and I'm, I'm assuming these guys will, uh, like the contract as well as the previous councilman, but, uh, I just wanted to know kind of what we might be expecting.
I'll be happy to ask and come back to you on it because I do not know.
We do not know, I mean, it's just one of those unforeseen.
And, and I'm not trying to flit you guys or anything, I know you've got a parent company.
And that, there's, I think, across the board, it's not just y'all, I think, uh, all of our members, all of our CDs, we've seen a slight increase, different ones this year. And, I mean, it's...
We're, we're thankful that y'all willing to come and give this presentation. Any other questions of our friends here today?
Uh, we're, we're very, we love the city of Hamilton. I mean, I have a lot of good friends with Matt and them on the fire department, they do an awesome job and take good care of folks and we enjoy helping them. My guys come up and do a lot of continuing education and teach for the firemen and stuff. We don't charge anybody for any of that. So, I mean, we just, we work really good with y'all's folks. Y'all got some good folks.
This is good to know. We, we can't bet on anything in these meetings, but we can hear from you. We'll have this on the agenda, uh, for our next meeting and, uh, let you know if it passes and, uh, by check.
Of course.
Checks, good, confirm.
It's always...
Yeah. And Ashley won't write to one of the bouncer, I promise.
I, I believe it.
She, she believes it.
I don't know, I'm laying it back to the old bank.
But, uh, thank y'all for coming today. And if no other questions, then we're going to move on to some other parts. We've got several things I mentioned, but we got to cover today or need to. And, uh, we just, uh, appreciate Airevac for all the good work you've done in the past and hope to continue our relationship with you guys. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else need this other packet?
I'll take it if you have an extra one of it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You're very much.
Good seat.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Andrea, we're going to talk about Captain Suddlin, Captain Hamilton Suddlin's house now. And Andrea's a little more in detail with us today and, uh, she's agreed to come in kind of short and areas of expense and need. So Andrea, I will give you the floor now.
There you go. Um, basically I wanted you all to look at your show of work and with a fine tooth comb and see if, I think I need to wait, um, see if this covers everything you're thinking about and it's got a few options on there.
Andrea, you got one more?
I'll make some copies.
You can have this one.
I'll make some more.
Um, do you want me to read through anything or just let y'all read it?
Go, just go ahead to the, to the presentation, we can catch, we can catch the list.
I think you can read it yourself and it's self-explanatory. The, the main thing I thought of while I've been going through this was some alternates. And there are three alternates that are listed here. Uh, one is to consider a new shingle roof on the house portion. It has damage in two or three places that I can see from the ground. I think you may have had a limb go through it lately and I don't know if that's covered under an insurance policy or, or something.
Should throw it to you.
I just wanted y'all to look at it with your eyes again and see what you think. I don't know the age of the roof. Do you know?
It's fairly new, I think. It's less than eight years. We, we did, we did it in our administration, I don't know if it's been...
Less than eight years on it?
Six, seven years probably. It's not that old. I've been told it's pretty recent.
I don't know why, I thought it looked like some of the granules were already coming off the backside. But y'all need to look at that and if you want to just, you know, do the spot repairs, that's fine, but if, if you go back to the new roof, I'd recommend the underlayment and the shingles over that. And then you're good for a good time.
Does anybody else need one?
I'll go.
Um, the other alternate listed is, um, the use of concrete over wood for the porch on the side and for the, the ramp at the house. I know that's a, a lot more expensive, but it also, you can see the condition of the wood ramp, how it looks out there over time, will have to be replaced or, you know, redone. But, um, I just want you to think about that. We'll put it in as an alternate. We can bid it as a wood and then have the alternate be concrete. But if you know beyond a shadow of a doubt you want me to change it before it goes out to bid, let me know that. And I can change it on the drawings. Um, those are the three things that I thought you might want to think about, uh, before I put the drawings out to bid. The schedule, I'm hoping to have you drawing by February fifteenth. That would be president's day, but are you having a meeting on the sixteenth? How do y'all do your, what's your meeting day?
I think that's right. I think we are closed that Monday.
We have president's day in the month of February and...
Yes, we're closed.
It's on Monday.
On the fifteenth.
We will be meeting on Tuesday.
So, my plan would be to have the, the documents for you to approve and, and send to the state at that time. And then it'll take a couple of weeks for the state to write back comments about the ADA compliance and then you would be able to then advertise and take bids and see where it goes from there. And before that fifteenth, or February fifteenth, I'd like to have one meeting with a couple of representatives from the city or, uh, something to go over it before it gets completed. You know, like a preliminary review. So I don't know if the work session before the sixteenth would be a good time to do that or if you want to have a special call meeting from here to do that, like...
I'm afraid, because we planned it in a work session because we get other items in there.
Too long.
This needs to be an uninterrupted session where we only concentrate on that. I'm willing to sit in and any two council persons that want to volunteer to, uh, help, we can't have a quorum, that's the one thing that we have to do is avoid getting too many people present and it become an official meeting, then we're going to have all the others present. So, just to discuss this, if you want to just pick your two council people and ask them to join you, then I'll stay out.
The ones that are available, or I can provide the drawings to everybody and then just to represent all the ideas, you know, or comments, or just one person bring all the comments to me or, you can email me your comments. I don't know how best to get the feedback. Y'all have a, how would you like that done?
I guess just whenever you are ready to have that preliminary, you can pass it through him and then we can decide, probably based off our schedules, which two or...
How you want to get that information back.
Yeah, just whenever, I guess a date is what I'm...
I'll just email you PDFs, Mayor, and then y'all can take it from there and then before the fifteenth is when I thought you, or the sixteenth, then y'all could approve it and a meeting will be sent out to the state and then we'll go from there. How does that sound for a second? Good? Okay. I think it's coming together just fine. Um, has anybody had any other thoughts since our walkthrough or?
Hey, none of these changes are going to really alter the historical side of the writing.
No, no, no. Everything will be done, um, considering the interior standards and everything.
Unless you go with concrete porches.
Huh?
Unless you go with concrete porches.
No, actually that's not a, a negative. There's, um, in the historical preservation, they actually like new things to look different than the old things so that you separate it out. In other words, there wasn't a historical wood ramp there way back. And that's, they actually had an argument about this building because the, it was back in the back of the deal-making of when it was built with the bank and everything. They wanted the brick to be different than the house, but it stayed the same. They matched the brick. Normally they would want that line to be more prominent so that you can see where the old house is and the new addition for the bank was. But it, it was worked out so that it could be the matching brick. So, I mean, it's not uncommon to do it differently.
I got a question. Do you think that we would make a different plan? If we're going to have this house sitting there empty like it is now, would we make a different plan for the house in that condition? Or if we could find a, a use for this house where it can be in daily use, do you think we'd do it a different way if we were, or do you think we'll do it the same way for either case?
I think that what we're doing are the basics to get it ADA compliant and up to being used on a daily basis. There's some things that just need to be fixed or replaced that, you know, just are hanging there, they're just not real functional. So we've got to make sure everything's sound and, um, ADA compliant. I don't know the height of the thermostat, we might have to locate that differently or something, but some things like that would be done even if you have a different tenant or a different use for the building.
Do you think the house would do better if we could find someone to be in it on a daily basis than just sitting there?
Uh, always.
Leathing?
Always. I would try my best to find a tenant or some organization that will take it and be there on a, at least three or four days a week and, and have it open to the public on a regular schedule.
That house is just not getting any love right now. I would just need a little love on the road.
Well, I think from what I've heard, you know, I think if you have a good tenant, then they will be taking care of it more and y'all could work out the upkeep of the ground.
I don't think we'd ever expect it to be just a general residence, but if some organization needed maybe an office space or something where it would get some attention every day, I think they're better than it is now.
I don't think you would change anything that's on this list. I think we're preparing it to be used by public, you know, for public use, open to the public and, and what...
Do you see on the grounds any chance that we could improve our parking? Is there any way in your mind that we could improve our parking for this house? It, it's just so limited there with sharing the parking lot with the...
Well, we had talked about that overflow parking possibly and we can look at that and have a lay that out and I can draw it to scale on the plans and I'll put that in as a future. And then y'all can look at that and, you know how we have the...
Do you think, I have five cars there at any given time and that's, the rest of the cars is somewhere else?
You don't have, you don't have to pave it. You know, we did the crushed stone at the splash park. I don't know if y'all like that or, just stay in there, isn't it? Just maintaining it. If it gets settled in there, it's pretty good and that allows drainage, you don't have a lot of runoff, so, um, there's some options.
It's just like...
Um, the other thing is I brought the copy of the contract, both what I'll use for the contractor and my contract for you to give to Scott Hunt, pardon, to the attorney. So, there you go. And, um...
Well, would you call a meeting when you're ready to meet with the council about the specifics?
The week of February tenth will be what I'll plan and, um, I can meet any day, any time of the day, uh, you know, morning or evening, um, if it's better for anybody or whatever. So, I'll, or if we get...
We're probably going to be kind of busy the fourth of February. We've got a big grand opening.
What happened? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it can be catered by Arby's.
Yeah.
We can cater Arby's to our meetings.
We can, we can meet at a table in Arby's. Andrea, thank you so much for your presentation today. Any questions of Andrea? She's, she's got more answers. We can, we can meet at a table in Arby's. Andrea, thank you so much for your presentation today. Any questions of Andrea's? She's, she's got more answers than you can believe. And she's really looked at these projects already. She's looked at the Hamilton-Sullins house so many times and the restaurants and all qualifications that have been made have pretty much been under her leadership and, um, tutelage and kind of guided us some and the directions that we've gone and, um, just, a few things were done on a rush effort, not by her administration, but because we wanted to have events by a certain day, we pushed some things in there that had to be speedily done and not well planned, but, um.
Well, they lasted a long time.
We planned to well plan the, the, the things we're doing going forward, that's why we need to meet with you again.
Yeah.
And get it up to speed, so.
It just needs to be used.
Yeah, it really does.
It does.
It really does.
We're gonna do it and it needs to be used.
Right.
I do think the chamber is still interested.
Yeah. What about the electrical and plumbing and all that? It's up to where, in one way, but opposite of there, it's.
It appears to be operating.
Yeah. I think all the plumbing's been redone and all electric.
Right.
New heat and cooling. Roof's not that old, it may have some damage, the roof's less than ten years old.
On the contract, I'm not including any work with those systems, but if we get into the, like, tearing something out and something's not right, we'll just get that done on an hourly basis.
You went through Roosevelt Village the last time?
We, uh, the roof got put on, caused some damage, so we got an insurance claim. And then made a brief search that.
And that's what I was asking her, do you, y'all know, I was asking her, do you remember if it was ACV versus?
Replace.
Replacement.
I don't know.
Because, you know, that'd be a big difference.
There's some rougher shingles left there on top.
I mean, it would be.
I can't get my ladder to go up there, I'm just telling you that. I don't know who to put up on top of that to straighten it out for us if y'all can come up with.
It's had some lumps or something fall on you, you can see the puckers in the shingles.
Do you, do you have your insurance with, um, come out?
The man that was on the table.
That's why I was asking. That's why I was asking if it was ACV versus replacement calls, um.
Well, that's just.
I don't think we need a whole new roof, I think we just need some repairs, that roof's not that old.
It's not extended.
I, that's what I, I'd have to go back and look.
Might be repaired for a few hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted y'all to look at it specifically in your eyes on a good day and, um,
The plumbing needs gutters, it had gutters.
Some of the flat chains are not working properly and letting water in.
Does that have gutters? Have y'all taken it rouse? Would that not have get the water away or would that take away from the store access?
Not, not really if I had to offer something.
What about some of the fireplaces or the chimneys? I know some of them were covered, that included, probably included.
They rebuilt the chimneys on it, they had the rock completely redone on one because it's coming loose from the house. We paid to have that done one time.
Everyone, whenever they were there, I looked at you and I looked in there. I didn't know, I mean.
I'll look at it and see if it makes anything.
Andrea, Andrea, is there any grants that we could get some more money to help with this?
We've got one.
Seven thousand.
And you can apply every year.
Okay.
So, for that same grant, and it helps maintain the, the items that are on the historical registry.
I knew we had that one, but I didn't know if that's even.
You can keep applying for that every year.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know when their due date is, but.
Most of them gotta be done, but sometime in April.
I can look that up for you.
Is, I know, is one of the NACOG grant, you know, mayor?
It's more through the historical Alabama thing, isn't it?
Alabama Historical Commission is the one that did the grant that we've gotten right now. But NACOG may have some for historical locations too.
I'll send an email to.
Um, I'm just thinking if there's any other. Alabama Power has grants, different entities have grants that, you know, you can use for improvements for a public, especially things involving education. If you have groups from school come and tour the facility, then you can, you know, have grants for those programs to get done. And I would really like to see some representative or a representative that has a historical interest be knowledgeable about the house and give tours to groups that, that want that, you know, it might not have to be somebody sitting down there every week, but that would be on your, your call list for someone to call and be in period costume and give a walkthrough to the students. I mean, that's the way to utilize it and, and use it on festival days and things like that. Lots to do. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch.
I'll be in touch soon.
Okay, thank you.
On the cleanup properties, I just, I, I want your consent to allow me to, um, ask our patrolman to take a careful look at our city, note addresses of abandoned properties. I want to start our cleanup with abandoned properties first, get us a list and then bring it to the next, um, session and we specifically concentrate on our abandoned properties cleanup. That's, I think that's a good starting place. And if the people still live in those properties, I think we need to deal with them on, on a letter. But abandoned properties, they're obviously, they grow up and things like that, I want the addresses. I want us to start with those and do whatever we've got to do. So, I just need your permission for me to ask our cops to locate the worst twenty-five spots in Hamilton of abandoned properties. And we're gonna start with that and, and if we get those twenty-five worked, we'll give us another twenty-five. We gotta stock somewhere on our cleanup.
Okay.
All right?
So, do you have to the individual or the officers that go out to?
Officers, our daily officer, the guys on our day shift, I'm gonna ask them to compile the list and get complete addresses for them and we're gonna start with those.
And we'll go out and look at them and see what top twenty-five we wanna do.
We're gonna get them to, to go out and list the top twenty-five for us to look at. And we know there's more than twenty-five sites, but we wanna start with the worst twenty-five. Try to get some of these properties cleaned up. They're not magically happen, we're going to make it happen, I can see it. We will have on this agenda, it's in the paper this week, our notice of the public hearing for loves for the sale of beer and wine, uh, for all premises use only. So, we'll be having that public hearing at the next meeting Monday night. Mike's here, we're gonna talk a little bit more about, uh, what's happening in our, in our, um, new route and system, uh, for our garbage. Mike, I want you to kind of tell the council, um, some of the reasons for our decisions about our system, the number of people that work garbage in Hamilton, all the criteria that we looked at comparing our system with other cities, this kind of thing. Just kind of tell them how we derived it, what we're doing today in our, in our garbage system with our new truck and our new system.
Okay. Uh, we started looking at a new garbage truck, probably, uh, Wade and I, probably six years ago, discussed a new truck and then it came to fruition, uh, last year. We got our truck in, uh, on order and, uh, it took several months to get it and, but in the meantime, we talked several different towns around, Winfield, Uin, Rustville, uh, Madison, up in, or, or, uh, Lampstone County, whatever that is. And, um, and, and the manufacturer of the truck or the people we buy the truck from, equipment. And talk to them about what they experienced, how they set their things up. And it, it, this is not something that we just arbitrarily went out and decided this is the way we're gonna do it. So, we took a, a month or two and we got the cans distributed, uh, before we ever started with the new truck. Uh, for several, about a month, we still went with the old trucks and tried to place and put notes on the cans and talked to people, this is, we're gonna start in first of November, this is the way we'd like the cans to be set up. Uh, there was, uh, uh, discussion about, uh, how we determine how we're gonna do the cans, you know, are we gonna make people buy cans? Are we gonna, uh, give people cans? About fifty percent of the people already had a green can that the Hamilton, that Hamilton had sold, sold. So, we didn't want, we didn't wanna try to force people, the other half of people to buy a can. And we didn't wanna give half the people a can, cause half the people already bought one, so we made the decision that we'd buy everybody a can. Now, uh, I heard mentioned that we gave everybody in the city limits a can. We didn't give everybody in the city limits a can. We gave the people who were paying garbage a can, okay? There, if you, I don't know if you know it or not, but there's about five providers of garbage service in Hamilton. So, you've got Hamilton, Mary County, Solid Waste, BFI, Waste Management and Republic. All of those people are in the city limits of Hamilton and they all do garbage service in Hamilton. So, people are asking, why are we making them use the, the red can? That's how we determine, that's our customer. It's not a county customer, it's not a BFI customer or any of the others. That's how we determine who our customer is. Now, we also go outside the city limits in some cases and pick up garbage there. And you, you may run across a, a county can, a city can, whatever. So, that's how we determine who our customer is. Now, when we, when we first did the, uh, started putting out the cans, we got several calls wanting to know, where's my maroon can? Well, it turns out, we were getting somewhere between, we ended up with somewhere between sixty and seventy customers or people we were providing garbage service for that weren't, weren't paying.
They're on well water?
Well water, or they've gotten the county to pick up their garbage or whatever, they just weren't paying.
Yeah, it just slipped through the.
And, and, and another situation was, uh, we have a lot, if you, I know you know, but Hamilton is, has a lot of rental property, a lot. In some cases, they have one meter and they'll spur off of that water meter to five or six places down in there and you're picking up garbage for all of them and he's paying one bill. And that's, that's the main reason that we wanna put out a, a maroon, want them to put out a maroon can. That signifies indeed that they are on our garbage service.
Well, it's just like my house, the apartment is a totally different address. And when Jean and Bailey lived there before me, the reason they had the water unhooked to the apartment is so they wouldn't have to pay that extra fee.
That's right. Now, what we, what we do in, in, in that case, in that case, if that's on a separate meter, if they're paying garbage, then there's two cans there. It means, it's specifically, if you're paying water and you're garbage, then you got a can. So, that's the reason for the two cans.
Mike, is there any, you've mentioned Republic and what's the other?
Waste Management.
Do they pick up residential garbage?
Wathas got all his on BFI.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't realize that somebody besides, besides county and.
They do dumpsters.
Yeah, they do dumpsters or something.
Yes.
They don't pick up garbage cans, do they? Or they're just dumpsters?
They're dump, dumpsters, but they are in, in the city limits and pick up garbage. Now, Watha has some that's not much bigger than a garbage can, if you look down back, um, the Molly across the street there and those apartment things there, but.
Yeah, they do the mini dumpster type deals, that's what we had.
Right, right, right.
Is there anybody picking up the cans like we got? Like a residential can like we got?
Down the county.
The county does.
Besides the county?
Within the city limits.
Within the city limits.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and we also, like I said.
Is that a residence or business?
Yeah, there's, there's, if you go out, for instance, if you go out County Highway forty-two and you, if you look at the map, you'll see one house will be in the city limits. You may go a quarter of a mile and be in the county and then skip and you'll fall back into the city limits. Our city limits is not a continuous circle.
That way it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But she has an election, you obviously, how she tries to determine if they can come and vote or not.
Yeah, yeah, so, I promise, we can do any of these things to try to, try to be.
Difficult.
Make difficult for people to do it and, and.
We're not getting nearly as many calls either, are we, Mike?
No, no, we, I mean, you know, we get, well, sometimes we might go two or three days and I could get a phone call. And then we might get two or three in one day.
One of the, one of the cities we compare to, city, if you guys want two cans out there at your house, your bill's gonna be this amount. And not if we pick up two cans, but the city's being generous, we're picking up two cans at the same price of a rec, of a regular bill. And I think we've been so good to our customers, we're just trying to make sure that we're not giving away our service. And by having the red can out there on the street identifies that that's definitely a customer. Some folks say, well, that's stupid, anybody would know I'm a customer, well, it's not stupid. It's a system that works.
But, gee, go ahead. What we don't want to happen in the future is for it to go back like it was. If, if you let them put a green can out there, for instance, a Walmart can, it's very similar to the cans that we sell here in the city and a lot of people use those. And we'll still pick it up if they have their maroon can out there with it. What we don't want to happen in the future is people just to set out a green can, cause you don't know if a renter moves out and another guy comes in there and keeps putting that garbage can out, that green can, is he, is he paying or is he not? You know, a truck, a driver, he sees the can, if it's out there on the side of the road in the past, he stopped and got it. He don't, he don't know, it's out there on the day garbage day comes, he's gonna pick it up, you know? Now, we have a way of knowing that that's our customer. We don't wanna follow it back to where we're, we're continuously picking up people's garbage that aren't providing the service or paying for the service.
I think what's probably most of your calls been about is, you know, the city sold those green ones, they paid sixty, seventy dollars, whoever wants for them at that time.
And they can still use them.
Right, right, and so what you're saying is the maroon one needs to be the primary can.
That's right.
To, to signal that.
That's our customer.
That that's a city customer to pick up the trash.
Yeah, and, and, you know, this is my thing. What difference does it make with, to them, to you or me, whether I put my garbage in a green can or a red can or a maroon can? We're gonna put it in a can, put it in a maroon, it's free, we gave it to you to use, we want you to use it, you know, and, and I really don't see the, personally, I don't see the point of arguing about whether I put my garbage in a green can or a red can. It's gonna be out there for approximately eight hours. Not gonna be hauling a bunch of garbage in and out in an eight hour period. Use the maroon can, it helps us out and in the long run, it'll help them out for the cleanliness of the city. We, we see a big difference. I could show you pictures of what these guys went through in the past and I've got them on my phone and I'll share them with you of what these guys had to go through to pick up people's garbage. We had, we.
Two, two shoulder surgeries where.
Dump truck, or pickup truck loads.
Water, cans full of water, rinsed the man's shoulders out, his rotator cuffs destroyed both of them, had to be operated on them. These cans with lids keep that from happening. You can pick up paper a lot easier than you can pick up water, which the, the mechanical arms are getting them down, but. It was awful what we were going through. Which the, the mechanical arms are getting them down, but, I mean, it was awful what we were going through. These cans.
Since, since we did that video, did that seem to help a lot, maybe?
It helped some, yeah, yeah.
I know you had one.
We, we helped through phases, you know, that, at first, it was putting the can too close to something. And, and we, we put notes on there, and we had, we had moved the can to where we, would be a good spot for them, and and we, we kinda had to learn how to communicate, you know, ourselves, because I, I wrote these things, and, and I, and I understood what I was trying to say, and, and part of it was real clear. It says on there to put out the marooned can in parentheses down there. Well, they, yeah, I necessarily understood that to be what that, what that said, it's something about line four or five, I guess, there. And it, and I also put on there, there needed to be three or four feet clearance on all sides of the can, thinking, well, if they put out one can, and it needs to be three or four feet on one side, either side, that if they put out two cans, they'd realize that it needs to have three or four feet clearance on each side too. Well, I didn't communicate that real well, cause the next issue was, people would have two cans out, and they'd have them placed real close together. And if you saw the video, you see what happens, it doesn't have room for the arm to work back and forth, and it'll knock one of the cans over, so. I even went back, and, and the ones that I have to go to now, I made a little note down here at the bottom to, to tell them, you know, to, to keep those spaced apart, but then, then the issue came up about, why can't I just put my green can out, you know, I live in the city limits, and so that's kind of the issue a little bit recently, and, and, you know, and I think everybody thought that, because I live in the city limits, they ought to know that, you know, this is my can, and, and and eventually, they, they probably will learn that, but the point being that we need to know for a fact. I've got two, two people that drive that truck, both of them come down with COVID. My next driver, he can drive the truck probably, but he don't know where, I mean, he, he can follow the map as far as the routes go. But he's not gonna know where to stop without that marooned can being sent out there, so.
You're having trouble with people piled on top of the cans? I see a bunch of them, I don't know if.
Yeah, and, and, you know, some of this stuff is, is is ideal, what would be ideal, like turning the can towards a certain way. It'll pick it up either way.
Oh, will it?
It will.
Okay.
Turn the camera off. No, it will, but the problem, potential problem is, if the lid goes down first,
Yeah.
and the trash falls down on, on the top of the lid, and the truck picks it back up to go down with it, it's gonna slam the garbage. So that's the point with the, with the wheels being turned towards the house.
That's just like my wife, the other night, she was trying to be nice, and she carried two cans out the road, wish she had them within an inch of one another, and she hadn't turned reverse.
And, you know, when we talked to the, to the people, they were adamant about if it's not put out there right, don't pick it up, cause you wanna generate the call. Then you have the opportunity to explain it to them personally, how to turn it and all that. So getting phone calls is part of the plan, you know, we wanna eventually not have any phone calls, but that's part of.
Do y'all take calls, do you take them?
Absolutely.
Or do they take them all at City Hall?
Well, they, I get phone calls, I, I give people my phone number. Sheila takes phone calls here, and then she'll, she'll call me, and I'll usually call them back, and, and nine times out of ten, I'll go out there and get their garbage and talk to them, and we never have any more problems, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a learning curve channel for all of us, and we, we think we're doing a, a goo- a good service for the city, you know, we're it don't seem like it sometimes.
Mike, is there freedom, guys, to do other things?
Absolutely, I, I hope you.
Is that giving you a chance to get this to?
Yeah, now, we've got, just on sanitation, we've got seven people. Now, we, we've got three people that, that can basically do the grass mow, and I hope y'all have noticed that we've been picking up paper along the sides of the streets and, and those kind of things. Spend a little bit more time downtown, trying to keep it cleaned up. We're still picking up, vacuuming up leaves people put out by the road. Treating, treating slams and stuff on trees that are overhanging the roads, and brush piles, those kind of things. So it gives us the opportunity to do more things than just four people, six people on garbage truck, probably. What, what was happening, we would and it speeded, it speeded the whole system up a lot, because now, oh, in the last couple of weeks, really, it's, it's sped up quite a bit. The garbage trucks are, are to the, to the transfer station and back, usually by lunch, eleven o'clock. So I've got three people that work, that are on the garbage trucks, and they're working all morning and in the afternoon, after lunch, then we got a couple hours, and we've got, we've got the other, other people working too, so it's it's helping out in that, in that regard too, so. I don't know what I, I'd like for all of y'all to be on board with us and understand what we're, what we're trying to accomplish, I, you know, if you've heard the saying or not, but if, if, if a pot's simmering, somebody's gonna stir it, so, you know, I, I'd like for everybody to be on, on the same board, on the same page as, as us, and, and try to see, see, see the big picture, you know?
Oh, I didn't know five different kinds of pick up and hang.
Yeah.
So I, that's first I heard of that.
You know, it's just, oh, we've probably done, should've done a better job explaining it. I think the old council, we've kind of been all, been through all this, and it, it's, it's just not something we just made up and started doing, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out what, what's best for us. And, and like the mayor said, we're doing, believe it or not, we're a lot lean, more lenient than, than anybody else that's doing this, this kind of thing. Town nearby, the mayor mentioned it. We distributed, we, we distributed the cans to everybody. Down the road, they made the customer come pick up their can from City Hall, if you wanted their garbage service, you had to come down there and pick it up. If you, and you had to tell them right then, I want one can, or I want two cans. If you want two cans, they'll give you two cans, but they're gonna bill you every month for two cans. In this case, if they were, if they were charged seventeen dollars for a month, the second can was half of that, so they're paying basically twenty-five dollars a month for us to pick up two, for them to pick up two cans. So we, we carry the can to them, we still take cans, if somebody wants to buy a can from us, we'll take it to them. And, and we're, we're at seventeen dollars.
For two cans, up to two cans.
Yes, up to two cans. We provide a place for them, if they, if they wanna bring garbage to the dump down here, it's open every day of the week, five days a week, if they have extra, they can bring it down there.
What's the times on that every day down there?
Uh, eight, um, now, household garbage, which, we're there six to two thirty. That's household garbage, in our landfill, garbage dumpster, is from eight until, our hours are normally till four thirty. Now, on Fridays, you know, sometimes he'll be there, but the dumpster's full, and you can't get any more in it, so we can't take anymore.
Bill Walker's still.
Bill Walker, yes.
And that's just two days a week?
That's the two days a week.
What days are that?
Wednesday and Friday.
Wednesday and Friday.
That's the eight to four thirty?
Yes.
Wednesday and Friday.
Yeah.
We've increased that by an extra day.
We added a day to that, so we just get on Friday.
One day.
Yeah.
At one point, Bill only worked one day a, a week for this, to manage that, and we've increased it to two, to give the customers more service.
Have, have we put any type of, do you know of, and notice, like in the water bill or anything, just to let people know that is the times? Just maybe it might clear up, just to, you know?
Well, no, we haven't, uh, it's, uh.
I've had some people asking about it, and I just thought, well, that's why I asked the times.
Of course, it's posted out there on the fence, but, you know, I've got, you know,
Yeah.
I've got a big poster out there that's got all the stuff we take, what we can't take, and maybe we still get, you know, stuff.
Those, the water girls, do they pretty much take the calls, and then they dispatch them to you or?
Sheila, Sheila Ferdinand downstairs takes them, takes them. Now, she's gone to lunch, the water department, or Angela, or Amy, or somebody to take the call. And we get, we get tickets. Somebody calls in, just say, gotta brush, trim some shrubs or whatever, they'll call City Hall. And, and, and she'll make us a work ticket for that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really, we prefer them to call on stuff like that, we prefer them to call, that's how we keep up with, you're, you're allowed three, three trips a year. And then after the third, we start getting, getting charged for it. So I've been here eight years, and I don't think we've charged anybody for, I mean, you get three thousand, so people, I guess, there's, how many, how many residences are there, there are now, I think we're close to three thousand now. So, three times a year, you know? You'd say it's hard.
Yeah.
But a lot of people do call the water because it's on the water bill.
Yeah.
Above the garbage, so they tend to call them.
Yeah.
I got hemmed up the other day while I was asking.
Yeah.
Mike, we appreciate the job y'all are doing, and we did want you to explain to the council why the system is like it is, because there's some misunderstandings that we're mistreating customers, and that's not our effort at all. We, we want to treat our customers properly and give them good service. But it helps us so much if they'll buy into our little system we devised, so that we know that we're doing our job and doing it correctly. And, you know, it's, there's not any, any matters that we're trying to have our way over somebody, it's just that we need them to buy into the plan, and we're generous to compare to other communities on, on our garbage setup, and believe me, our customers are getting full service in a spot most of the time.
And people are resistant to change.
Well, you know, my wife tells me that I don't mean to be ugly to people, but sometimes when I try to make my, make my point, she says it sounds a little and I don't mean to be. Ninety percent of the time, ninety-five percent of the time, if somebody calls me, they didn't pick up my garbage, I'll go out there and pick up their garbage, and try to explain to them why. And when I leave, I, most, most everybody's happy. You know, we, unfortunately, we live in a soc- society now, to where if you don't necessarily agree with somebody, and your opinion is different from theirs, they perceive that as being combative. You know, and, and I, I want everybody to know that's not the case, that I'm trying, I don't wanna be that. And, so, I tell everybody, I'm glad you called.
I will say, I saw you picking some garbage up out of, out of a can the other day.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the guys are out, I, I've ridden on the garbage truck several times, and, and I, I've been
It's rough, ain't it?
It's rough, it's rough, yeah. And it's, but I don't wanna, I, I, I've told everybody, I don't wanna tell somebody to go do something that I'm not willing to do myself, and, oh, I think I've earned respect of the people that work for me.
Well, I see why the marooned can needs to be out there, cause we got five different people, all, you know,
Yeah.
That they hate seeing us, and know that now.
Yeah, it's, it's it's re, it's confusing, especially when you're out there, driving, trying to drive the garbage truck, worried about what's on the bag back there, that people riding on the bag. And, and people ask too, you know, the old truck is coming by here, what difference does it make how I've got my turn, can turned, or or it's, or too close together? Eventually, that truck's probably not gonna be coming by there, and we wanna go ahead and get them accustomed to putting it out the right way. And, and we tried to do all that before we ever started, and some people took notice to it, and some didn't, and we've maybe not been real clear about how we wanted it done, so.
We want to work every household we can with a one-armed truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's efficient, and, and that arm doesn't have to strain at it, it's, it's made to cut that kind of way. And we'd like to work it for that truck. Thank you, Mike.
So anytime y'all have any questions, I'll be.
Yeah, Mike's available, he makes himself available to you. If you got questions or comments to him, he'd, he'd, it would be refreshing for him to hear from you.
Sure, sure.
So let him know.
And if I get short with you, it's not a problem, I, I just kind of put it out there.
I've got two other things quickly, I won't run back at you guys before we, I turn this wheel. C three has been in touch with me, our C three organization is promoting business and industry for Marion County, Fett County, and Lamar County. We're not a member currently. The last administration voted not to continue to work with them as a member of the organization. They're in the process of hiring or appointing new leadership. As soon as that they announce the new leadership, I'd like to bring their, their person and any of his associates, he'd like to bring her, I don't know if it'd be him or her. I'd like to bring them to the table for us to discuss getting back in the C three organization, and the reason for that, somehow, I feel like, once this COVID thing subsides, and I believe we're moving in a direction slowly, I think there'll be some new businesses looking to locate to smaller cities. I've already read online how many big companies are looking for a smaller venue, manufacture their products in. I think Hamilton is poised for this. I think we need to do everything we can to recruit additional industry for our area. We got a marvelous park down here, ready to go, and it just needs to be filled up. So as soon as we can find out who the new leader is, I'd like to get them here, any of them will come and talk with us. Also, some of you mentioned meeting and greeting the new college president. I think some time has passed, I think we're overdue for that visit. Do you want him at a council meeting, or do you want him at a meeting like this?
Council meeting, not the meeting, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna invite him to our council meeting, and it'll probably be the second one in February. I've run into him twice recently, very cordial man. I think he has some intent to work hard for the Hamilton campus, and I'm anxious to get him down to meet everyone. The college, for goodness sakes, is located in Hamilton. Our council and me need to know him better and to get a feel for what we can do to support him. If we're not in support of our college, we're missing the boat somehow. Uh, the college can train our workforce if we need trained. That's one of the things that's being specified by all organizations who recruit business. Get your workforce trained. Get your people to where they can do a job if it's offered. And so, uh, for goodness sakes, let's get behind this college president like we've never supported a college president before and let them know that our interest is in them and the school and what it can do for our, our neighborhood here. And so, with y'all's permission, I'm gonna reach out to him next week and, uh, invite him to our, our council meeting the second one in February.
Skill labor's coming back strongly and I hope our college can continue to grow in that area.
There's three of them hiring. N T M needs ten or twelve workers. A lot of places right now are saying, come on down, we'll give you a job. And as soon as the government quits pumping six hundred and fifty dollars in their hands every week for unemployment, I think that people are gonna work. I really do. And, uh, I threw that in for good measure. I think it's, I think a working world is better than a give, a give me world. People that work and do a good job have some pride within themselves. People that sit at home and draw a check and are able to work, they're missing the boat somehow. We're supposed to be productive in this life. Not, it's not a give me society, but we could quickly turn into one.
Well, it's, it's a good campus down there and it, it needs to be used. It's been used in the past and it's helped our, our area and, and it helps to keep people here and have.
Well, I mean, just as far as coming to the nursing program, how long has it been now? I mean, it's, there's no telling how many nurses it's pumped out in the, in the last fifteen years.
We're gonna try to have a work session on a Tuesday early enough that we can go over as a group, take the used van with us to the, uh, property over here, the Munsonware, what we call the Munsonware property. Visually, we need to see what we think we can do with that property to make it friendly to our neighborhood and to start utilizing it somehow. The ball fields, uh, sow it in grass, uh, put a, uh, rough walking trail around it to what that we can improve on, a river walk, whatever we want to do. Let's identify our boundaries at least and, and start utilizing that land somehow. We got a good piece of land over there. I think it's, uh, a great, a great time to be looking at it. And Scott and I talked briefly about that today and we're just gonna go to that site and take a look at it. We'll take you with us, Angela.
When are we gonna do that? Did you say?
We're gonna, as soon as, as soon as we get to warm out.
The rain's gonna hit.
We might start our meeting thirty minutes earlier where we can actually go over there physically.
I've been over there twice and walked it. It's, I didn't realize it is, it's as big as it is.
Thirty something acres?
Yeah, I just, you know.
Around forty-seven acres in total. Some of it's in the woods.
Woods, yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, that makes it more nature, uh, friendly. Uh, you can see more birds and you can see more squirrels and.
Snakes.
Let's just say they're here for a purpose. Uh, so, uh, anyway, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do some things that's not just around the table this year. We're gonna do some things. We gotta get out of this place and brainstorm together some. And so, just be ready. Uh, at a moment's notice, we might be up, uh, hitting the trail. So, I appreciate you men very much. Thank you for your hard work.
I, I may as well just.
We, uh,
Uh, we get something.
Couple of us met Ronnie Dicker the other night and, you know, we've had a post about some jobs.
Uh huh.
And he's got some guys that's won't come back to work. And he brought that to me yesterday because he went out of town today. He'd be back, uh, maybe Saturday or Sunday, but, uh, before Monday night, I consider putting on the agenda, go ahead and get these guys hired. He said he talked to Scott Hunt and Scott said, go ahead and do it. So, you probably need to touch base with the chief and, you know, make sure y'all, you're him on the same page. But that's three people that he had talked to and is wanting to come back. Two of them's wanting to come back.
Y'all, y'all ordered on Monday nights as an agenda?
If, if the other guys do okay.
Okay.
And we, you know, with something else, we have a police department to heal. I think to make it stronger where we're not losing maybe cops in the future, we need to look at that, um, you know, like the.
Five-year scale.
Yeah, it's a ten-year scale right now. We really need to look at the five-year, make it a five-year scale. Cause I think that would put all departments that have a scale on the five, five-year scale.
I think it's correct. I believe it's right to you, Bo Angel.
And they have one drawn up and it does not include rays. It is, it's just shortened the scale. And start points the same, end points the same, uh, at this point.
We're always, it seems like we're always looking for patrolmen and, you know, for the city.
That, that takes ten years to top that. So.
And the two vehicles on there needs to be scratched. They're not available. We, he thought they were Tahos available. They're not even available. Can't find them anywhere. So he may try a couple something else. But.
It'll be twenty twenty-two, so maybe four Tahos will be available. So.
So I don't know what we're gonna do about vehicles. He had them in his budget, but, uh, he'll have to talk to you about that. I'm sure he can reach him. That's, he brought that back yesterday, late yesterday and said he'd be gone today out of town. He won't have a chance to get rid of this.
Well, we've had, we've had, uh, probably at least two officers let us know and one's already given us their letter and the other's put us on notice that said job comes available, he'll probably be leaving us. So.
Really, you're just feeling more sleep?
Right. The two of them. Right. It'd be, what's on that list if anyone had.
Yeah.
It'd be David Wood.
Okay. We appreciate y'all looking into these matters and, um.
I have a question. Anything that we discussed as far as Tim Rice pay, um, I know that Ross and I, and he talked to a couple of you guys and we talked to you, Mayor, um, about doing the hope safety, um, payday, I guess it was. Um, I guess the only, only gripe I have was what the fire department is. Tim Rice, the only department head is the lowest paid employee in this department. Um, not, I mean, I, yeah, I'm in, I'm volunteering fire department, but that has nothing to do with it. I'm not kind of big by us or anything. Um, but when you got a department head who is the lowest paid employee in that department, I think there's an issue.
Check your numbers. I'm not sure you're right on that one.
Okay.
That would check.
Do they make more because of overtime?
They, they.
Tim is also, he's also hired three part-time guys to cut down dramatically on overtime. Um, but I mean, that's just.
Then what, pay them at ten dollars an hour?
We're, we're gonna talk about, uh, raises for certain.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.